Hello.
Can you hear me? Okay. Please note this meeting will be broadcast live from the council's website. For those who are sitting in the public hour here, there will not be a view of the cameras. Members of the public who are registered to speak at the meeting will already be in the pocket. The camera's there, so do not. Um. Yeah, can you hear me all right?
Can you switch it on?
You're watching, but I don't want to go forward. You all right? No. No, I'm good. Hello. 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 Here we go. We're back up here.
Hello. Ah, there we are.
Hello. Sam B.
Hello.
Thank you. Um, welcome to Sam Daniel Town Meeting. You may wonder why I'm chairing tonight's meeting, but unfortunately the mayor is recovering from Covid and we do not have a deputy mayor, so I've been nominated by my fellow councillors to chair this meeting. It was three years ago that I chaired the last open meetings with everyone present, but of course we've had Covid. So at least we all survived this epidemic. There's been a lot of changes in the three years. A town clerk left and now we have a CEO. Six councillors have resigned, including two deputy mayors, which has resulted in two by-elections and we're still one councillor short. I do hope during the next year, everything resumes normal and we'll enjoy the festive activities that are planned, especially Queen's Platinum Jubilee.
Too close. Please, could you come a little more slowly?
More slowly?
Yes.
Okay.
And could you also keep the microphone at a constant distance?
Yeah.
The trouble is naturally we do this and that, but that does distort.
Could you come more in the front seat?
It's not for me, it's wrong for me.
No, I don't know why, but it's far back, Ian. Okay.
He doesn't have to hold it so close.
Well done Sally, thank you. Item one, chairman's welcome introduction to representatives and town councillors. So here we've got our town councillors, so I don't know if you'd like to stand up councillor, introduce yourself to everyone? We have got some new councillors.
I'm councillor Paul Carter, I've been here for fifteen years.
Okay.
I'm councillor Claire Anderson and I've been a councillor since I was elected on February the tenth in the by-election.
I'm councillor Nicholas Gray.
I'm John Bright, I've been a councillor since nineteen eighty-five when I was elected in a by-election. I was mayor for three years and I'm still a councillor until next May twenty-three, when you may decide whether we want to keep you or not.
I'm councillor Nicholas Gray, I was also elected in February this year.
I'm Colin Miles, I was also elected on the tenth of February.
Hello, I'm councillor Harry Sampson, I was elected in twenty nineteen.
Hello, I'm councillor Bean Gray, I was elected in September two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, we can now, uh. Would you like to say, introduce yourself?
Yeah, sorry, uh, in the everybody, I'm Trevor Garda, Dover District Council.
Yeah.
Yeah, good evening, I'm John Ross of Allerton Strategic Division of Dover District Council.
Good evening, everybody, I'm Peter Gill, I'm the county councillor for the Sandwich area.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Chris Hammond, the head of investment regulatory for Dover District Council.
Thank you, good evening, I'm Paul Burrell, I'm the community safety unit inspector for Dover District Police.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Anna from the Bishop's Chapel, I'm the senior chief whip.
Okay, thank you. Item two, apologies for absence, we've got apologies from councillor Graham, councillor Friend, councillor Danielle Carter and councillor Suriaka. Item three is the mayor's annual report twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Okay. This is Paul Graham's report, so I'm reading it on his behalf, okay? Since my election, the mayoress and I have done all we can to make sure that Sandwich is maintained as a great place to live and work and that there is a thriving economy, not only for local residents but also for tourism. In our first four years, we raised more than thirty thousand pounds for local charities with considerable support. Unfortunately, this last year we raised only two thousand eight hundred, which will be distributed before the approaching end of the mayoral year. In addition to having had the privilege of being mayor for those four years, I also served as deputy mayor for the preceding three years. The last two years have been very different with the onset of the pandemic, which I believe has changed our lives forever. During this time, there have been many personal changes and health difficulties within the Guildhall, which meant, under legislation at that time, face-to-face meetings could not take place and we were resigned to send our colleagues on a screen, which introduced new dynamics to the council committee and for meetings. The result was no decisions could still be made, communications suffered due to remote homeworking and other factors which resulted in STC's communications not being as effective as they might have been. This has been overly acknowledged by many councillors and officers, past and present serving. We're all working hard to reassure the public and address the short flaws incurred. The past six months have been particularly fractured through all sorts of allegations made against councillors, individually and collectively, which has not been proven to be founded. My experience of working with all councillors over the years is that without exception, there is no evidence of any sort of wrongdoing. We must remember that all decisions which are acted on by authors are made by majority vote in full council and no individual councillors have the power to act independently of direct officers. Unfortunately, many of these conversations have been held on social media, where it now seems to be considered appropriate that council and Tolbridge Fund business can be conducted. This, of course, is not the case and moving forward, we should ensure that future business is conducted within standing orders and the code of conduct, which have been agreed by all the proper legislative guidance. The future of the Guildhall, I hope, has been secured by the business plan, which has been agreed by the trustees, STC. We must ensure that the Guildhall and in particular the cultural and museum keep us part of our tradition and heritage in Sandwich, particularly as part of our tourism offer. Much work has been done so far by officers and volunteers who are the bedrock of our special community in Sandwich. Sadly, the alternative concept of considering the loss of these assets would alter the long-standing what day-to-day and community traditions of our precious town erocically. Finally, I'd like to pay tribute to the Guildhall staff, who despite some targeted criticism, have worked hard to keep the Guildhall and STC on track, ensuring that there is a positive future. Much work has been commissioned throughout the Guildhall during the period of closure, such as redecoration, replacement furniture and new heating boilers, all agreed by the council, helping to secure a viable and successful commercial future for the Guildhall. I sincerely hope that councillors and staff will unite as an effective team, collaborate with KCC, DDC, under other important longstanding strategic partners, to ensure the future prosperity and success of Sandwich in the interest of our residents. We must remember that Sandwich is the ancient head port in the Confederation of Saint Ports, in addition to the other ancient Saint Ports, two ancient towns, nine limbs and three liberties. And as such, we have a responsibility to observe and protect the longstanding tradition that covers the acclaimed title. I wish the new mayor and his administration our very best wishes for the coming year, councillor Paul Graham, MBE JP. Item, item four, which means including updates, to approve the minutes of the annual assembly of the town meeting of Sandwich held on Wednesday seventeenth of March twenty twenty-one at seven P M. The minutes are available at www.sandwichtowncouncil.gov.uk. Pinted copies are also available from the visitor information centre within the Guildhall. So I don't think there's many of us at the meeting last year, so, um. We approve the minutes. Okay. Goodbye. Goodbye. Hello councillor, we're just approving of the minutes of the last year's annual town meeting. You have a second now? Oh yeah, I think all in favour, there's only a few of us here, okay, thank you. Item five, statement of account, to receive un-audited financial statements as of thirty-first of March twenty twenty-two for Sandwich Town Council and the Sandwich Tolbridge Fund. Previous year's audited accounts can be accessed at www.sandwichtowncouncil.gov.uk and on the charity commission website. Item six, unfortunately councillor Chandler will be joining us later, so hopefully, um, we can get her to speak then. Yes, the guest, would any of you like to speak for, on your way?
Lovely, thank you very much. Um, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Lovely, thank you. Um. As explained, I'm the community safety unit for Dover District, including Sandwich, have been for the last six months or so, uh, all but under twenty years of policing experience elsewhere in the police. Uh, it's an absolute pleasure to be here tonight and thank you councillors, ladies and gentlemen, for having me. Uh, normally, when I come to an occasion like this, I come prepared with, uh, a screen, PowerPoint and talking through exactly what's happening on your district to give you a proper overview. We're a little limited for time tonight, so I'll try and reduce it down to the headlines if I may. Um, first of all, as somebody who lives in Dover District, it's my absolute pleasure to report that Dover remains one of the safest places with the lowest levels of reported crime in, uh, not only East Kent, but short of living in Seven Oats in the entirety of Kent itself. And within the Dover District, Sandwich and Worth wards are some of the safest wards for reported crime and antisocial behaviour. Despite some of the challenges facing policing, we see a continued downward trend over time of serious crime types. So, crime types like burglary, robbery, serious violence against the person continue to fall in Dover District, year on year, and that's been a trend that's been going on for some time. There are crime types that increase. Sorry, can you hear me? Is that better? There are crime types that are increasing, things like fraud, domestic abuse. Uh, and these are areas of focus for Kent police going forward, but traditional acquisitive crime, robberies, burglaries and the such like, continue to fall. Uh, and Dover District and Sandwich in particular suffer with some of the lowest of those serious acquisitive crime types. Additionally, Sandwich has some of the lowest recorded rates for violence against the person, for assaults and public disorder. So whilst we always acknowledge that there is challenges for communities, it's my absolute pleasure to report that statistically speaking, Sandwich is one of the safest places to live, work and enjoy leisure time in. Those are the headlines, ladies and gentlemen, and I'm sure when we get into it a little bit later in the questions and answers session, uh, there'll be some specific questions that you'd want to ask. But without taking up too much of the time tonight, that is the overall view, which in sum is crime continues to fall, Sandwich is one of the safest places in Dover District, if not, uh, East Kent and the county of Kent itself.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to say a few words?
I can't.
Yeah, I see you saw me, uh.
Yeah, I wasn't prepared for this, but, um, I'm more than happy to say a few words. Um, I became leader of Dover District Council about two and a half years ago. Uh, my predecessor decided one day to stand up and say he wasn't enjoying the role anymore and he walked out the door and that was literally what happened. Uh, so I've come and taken the role on, it's been quite challenging, uh, but, um, I am still smiling. Um, very proud to be leader of Dover District Council. We're trying to work exceptionally hard in Dover to work with all our communities and businesses. Um, we're focusing on Dover quite heavily because, um, it's such an important iconic town. Uh, we've got the wonderful White Cliffs of Dover, we've got the castle, um, it's a great place to be and we're heavily promoting tourism, not just in Dover but in Deel and of course in Sandwich, and we want to continue to do that. You know, we've got a wonderful, um, well, just heard about the crime rate, uh, which is so low. We've got some wonderful tourist places for people to visit and, uh, we should be proud of that and encourage more people to do so. Um, Dover itself has its, has its challenges. St James's Development, uh, that is, uh, not owned or run by Dover District Council, is a great asset to have though. Um, it has though, uh, maybe moved some of the shops out to the High Street, so we're looking at how we can develop the High Street better. Um, at the moment, we've been very successful with lottery grants. Nine point one million, uh, is being spent on the Maison Du there in Dover, a very old, uh, building, but lovely with so, so many features, but very difficult to access. So we're trying to bring it up into the twenty-first century, change the entrance to that building, so it's going to be easier for disabled people, uh, people in wheelchairs etcetera to, to come in and open it up to the public so they can hire it for all sorts of events and venues. Uh, if you've been down recently to Curzney Abbey, Russell's Gardens, uh, we want, we've managed to get three point one million, uh, for the, from the lottery again for the improvements to that. And, um, it's a fantastic place to go and visit and we've just been awarded the green flag status, uh, which not many authorities have, have had. Um, so there's an awful lot going on in the district and we want to continue to walk, work with everybody as closely and, and as closely as possible. Um, the weather's changing, um, Covid's gone, hopefully, fingers crossed, and, uh, it'd be great to celebrate the Queen's Platinum Jubilee. Uh, your two district councillors, councillor Chandler and Friend have been given some funding to help with your community event. It's not a huge pot of money, uh, but we have been, um, allocated all the, uh, thirty-one councillors in the district have got some money for that. So if you're putting on street parties, uh, events, please contact them for that. But we've got some wonderful things to look forward to and, um, thank you very much for listening.
Lovely, thank you. Councillor Sampson, would you like to talk about your pet project?
So it's a little bit unfair to say it's my pet project, but I spoke about this on council, sorry, in council on Monday. Can you all hear me all right? Perfect, um, so my name's Harry, as I said earlier. Um, I get involved in a number of events around Sandwich, so Falcon Ale, Sandwich Lights etcetera. Um, I've been approached by several of these local event groups to ask council, councillors, those attending, those watching from home, um, online or in person, that all these groups are looking for volunteers. So there are many great people in the town who give up their free time, uh, to help, but with what is expected to be an economic revitalisation for Sandwich post-lockdown, they're on the lookout for more volunteers to boost their numbers. So I'm just going to ask, please, please, if you see a local group looking for volunteers, please tell your friends and family, share their adverts on social media and maybe even think of joining in yourselves. So Sandwich is going to be bustling once again and I think together we can make a great experience for visitors to this town. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Okay councillor Murray, would you like to say some words?
Uh, yes, good evening everybody. Um, just to go on further to events, uh, quite a few people have been asking what's happening regarding the Jubilee weekend in Sandwich. Um, I have a little update, this was read out also on Monday, but I'll read it to you again. Um, so, see, on the Thursday, uh, the Sandwich Medieval Trust will be active on the key green throughout the evening to complement the beacon lighting, which will be done by Sandwich Town Council at nine forty-five, uh, P M. The Medieval Trust will start their activities about seven o'clock, I believe. Uh, medieval musicians will be invited to play, uh, and wasteful drinks will be on offer. The trust volunteers plan to put a bonfire to add to the beacon flare after it's been lit. On the Sunday, a street party on the Guildhall forecourt, uh, hosted by the Sandwich Horned Twinning Association, will be hosting forty visitors from France. Originally, that weekend was supposed to be le weekend, it's now been moved back, back a weekend, hence why we have this, uh, this, uh, this little gathering for the French contingent that normally come over. Uh, they will be keen to, uh, keen to participate in the Jubilee celebrations. A street party with musical entertainment from one P M to five P M on the forecourt with Anglo-French music, set from Holly Firmin and our local rock choir, the rock choir will also join in with the picnic. Uh, on six P M to nine P M in the Guildhall main room, this room here, uh, audiovisual concert party for the Horned Flower visitors, Queen, recorded music, historical, pace, new style footage, live music from the fifties duo, uh, from a hip fifties duo and a hot food served to our visitors in the interlude. There is also a scope for others to join in, uh, since our main numbers will not fill, our numbers will not fill the main room. Throughout the whole weekend, from, uh, from twelve P M till six P M every day in Dell Street, the Flurry de Lise pub will be hosting a live concert, uh, celebration for the Jubilee, uh, with two bands playing each day from Thursday to Sunday. After six P M, it will then go inside into the flow, another two bands will be playing into later in the evening. Then on the Sunday in the evening at six o'clock, uh, is followed by the big Jubilee quiz, replacing our standard Sunday night quiz, but as usual hosted by councillor Sampson, he's the quiz master that does it every week. Feel free to check the events online, on Facebook, i- if you'd like to know any more information. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor. Councillor asked, would you like to talk about Gays and Salts?
Yeah, hello, can you hear me? Um, Gays and Salts Nature Reserve, just to give you an update, could I just ask, how many people here have been there in the last year or so? Quite a few, yeah, and I recognise a few trustees and volunteers in the room. Um, so just to let you know, Gays and Salts, just across Ash Road there, um, it was destroyed by flooding in twenty thirteen when we had the storm surge and it was then closed for about five years. And I can remember going there a couple of years ago and it was a complete desert in terms of wildlife. There was no, uh, the, the, the lake was covered in duckweed, there were a couple of sad-looking ducks there. Um, and if you walked around at this time of year, there would be no bird song or anything. But over the last two years, it's been completely transformed and we've had fantastic support from DDC, who've, um, done lots of dredging work with the Environment Agency, desilting the lake and so on. They've also supported us with grant funding and we've had funding from various other bodies, including the Tolbridge Fund, who've given us very generous support. Um, but one of the main, um, benefits we've had is volunteers who've been coming every week. We have more than twenty some weeks and they really have done a fantastic job to reopen all the paths, to cut down vegetation, um, to create new habitats for wildlife. And if you go there now, it's, it's completely transformed, as I say, it's a wildlife haven, there's bird song everywhere. We've had kingfishers, we've had, um, peregrines, cormorants, uh, lots of ducks there. We've had ten ducks that were dumped by someone who, who are very popular, um, tourist attraction. Um, but it, I would recommend going there, it's, it's genuinely a wonderful oasis, a calm oasis in the middle of Sandwich and, um, we, we want to do a lot more and hopefully we'll get funding from other bodies in the future to build a visitor centre and, and do outreach work because after Covid, I think it's really important that people have somewhere to go where there's a, um, you know, quiet oasis and it's good for people's wellbeing and everything else. So, um, yeah, let's get the brief history and do come and visit us. Thank you.
Yes, we now come to item seven, a question and answer session. Priority will be given to those questions notified in advance of the meeting to the town clerk's office at the Guildhall, which allows for a comprehensive response to be given at the meeting. I'm also, elected, I'm also invited to ask questions on the night. Um, I think we've only had one question sent in and, uh, it's the use of social media by councillors. Following recent negative social media interaction and resulting effects on councillors and Guildhall employers, resident at Sandwich would like to pose the following question. Should it be forbidden for councillors to refer mainly openly or obliquely to other councillors on council business on social media? And, uh, we do have an I T committee, so councillor Sampson, just answer that question for me, please.
So, can you hear me? Cool, um, so I'm afraid. Cool. So I'm afraid I've just seen the question just before we started. So I try to answer as best as I can. Hilariously, you probably have chosen the youngest person in the room who doesn't use social media very much. But I can only really give my personal opinion on this and legally I can't prevent any councillor from saying what they believe as much as I may sometimes disagree with what they say. What I would advise residents should do is check official STC, sorry, STC official accounts for full unbiased facts and I think after recent toxicity on social media, we're at the risk of turning away tourists and new arrivals to our town. I hope all councillors and activists can restrain themselves and remember everyone wants to make Sandwich the best it can be, just they may have different ways of achieving it.
Thank you, truly councillor. The social media is actually being reviewed at the moment, so new guidelines are most probably issued but we do ask councillors very often to refrain from using too much social media. So we come now to the question and answer session. So if anyone would like to ask you a question, if they'd like to stand up to say their name, where they're from, so. Okay, Ian.
I'm Ian Black, I'm in Southwark. I have three questions and they're not necessarily related. First of all, I am a museum volunteer and the number of times that we're getting people to come in and use us as a tourist centre is daft. When is the tourist centre going to be properly open and is it moving back to where it was originally? A prime location where passersby can see it. And please don't tell me the problem of weddings because I work in the museum. We work around weddings and this is crazy, the way they're making this tiny. You alright there? I'll carve down here. Nobody sees them in the alleyway. Please, when is this going to change? You talk about, our councillors have talked about making Sandwich great again. The first thing you need to do is have some blooming publicity and that is a better location, I can assure you. Because the number of people that come into the museum looking for the tourist office is quite staggering and if there aren't any other museum volunteers here, I'm sure they will back me up. That's my first question. The second question is, this lady here works her cotton socks off getting this message from this particular meeting out to more people. I asked three months ago when this was going to be organised by the council. Zero, nothing. When is this going to happen? We're taxpayers, we're entitled to know what this council is doing. It is not convenient to look it up on Facebook. Sometimes people can't come in here. She's done a sterling job and I do want to emphasise that. But when is this council going to come into the 21st century? Please. The third question, and it is a very localised one and I don't know if the police are going to be able to answer it. Is it a responsibility of the police to have some impact upon the safety of the roads in Sandwich? I presume it is. Listen, they're not the only ones who enforce. I live in Dover Road. Dover Road and Deel Road junction had a bad crash recently. I have never, ever seen any police presence anywhere along there despite the illegal parking, and I mean right on the junction. All the problems we've had with Kumar up the road, I have never seen anybody there to enforce parking restrictions, even when children are coming in and out. If you can assure me this has happened, that would be very good, but I've never seen it. And I, because when I have my breakfast, I can see people going up and down the road. This, to me, seems to be a set of accidents that are waiting to happen. Clearly, there's always going to be problems of people parking on double yellow lines, I'm not concerned about that. I'm an expert transport man, I can see where hazards occur. I got paid to do it for 10 years and I do not see any enforcement and I would like to see that happening.
Councillor Fox will answer first.
Thank you. Am I holding this in the right place? Can you hear me? Great. The interviews for the summer employees for the Visitor Information Centre are taking place this Tuesday. We hope they'll be able to start quickly. There will be cover all week and they will be working in pairs. So one will be in the office and the other will be out meeting and greeting and walking around the town to speak to tourists and welcome to our beautiful town. So that, I hope, will give the visibility. We have not considered the idea of moving the Visitor Information Centre back. There are various reasons why it might not be a good idea but we have to discuss this with the full council so I can't really give you an update now. But the Visitor Information Centre, the show that's been delayed, the interviews, but they're happening next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Dealing with the IT, we did try the IT on a planning meeting, didn't make it in the council chamber but I don't know what happened, it weren't very successful. But I think the only way forward is we'll have to buy our own equipment, you know, a nice camera and a nice sounder. Because this hall here, the acoustics, absolutely tell. The designer's feeling, I know the local architect, he didn't have a clue about acoustics. I think the old borough council wanted to spend the money before Dover District Council put their hands on it all. That's why we had the Tollbridge Fund. As for the police question.
Thank you. Absolutely, the police have a hot play in road safety. Depending on the nature of what's causing the safety issue, obviously we work with our partners. I'm not going to say that police don't have a role to play in parking although the authority lead on parking infringement. We do obviously work with a handy glove and if there are aggravating circumstances or they need our assistance with matters, then we always help out. Genuinely, I'm really, really sorry that the perception is you don't see a uniformed enforcement round there because Debbie, my colleague here, I can assure you, is aware of the problems up there and has been working towards them. Obviously, we have to portion our time accordingly where the greatest problems are. And in terms of road safety, we do use a lot of data based on the courts and the problems and crashes to import where we spend our time. So if there's a specific problem anywhere, the first thing I would encourage people to do would be to report it. And there are various different ways to report it to Kent Police and Partners, KCT, Highway Authority with regards to individual issues. So if there are issues, then please, the first step is to make sure that you let us know about them so we can apportion our time to try and address them.
Thank you. Is there another question? Sally.
Thank you. First of all, I'd just like to address the police officer. Which I haven't had any of this written down because I.
No, Sally, could you put it in front of the microphone, please?
Yeah. I thought I could shout now, you know.
Thank you.
I haven't prepared this question.
To what, towards it?
Is that, alright. God, I'm dead. I haven't prepared my question for the police officer because I didn't know he would be here and also I wouldn't know what he was going to say. But I can tell him now. I have reported things and nothing is ever done. Other people have reported things and their experience has been exactly the same as mine. No. Oh, at least to our knowledge, nobody has dealt with it time and and time again. So now I don't bother and I do a lot of other people. They don't bother to report it. I've even, which is something everybody will know about me, I don't even go online but I really did go on once and reported it on your website. I was supposed to get replied within five days. A year later, I still hadn't had a reply. So really, that is the level of policing that we receive here and we deserve better than that. So I'm just bringing this to your attention and I would like to also add that I go to the meetings for, I think it's Chief Superintendent Emma Banks. She's dealing with violence against girls and women. The last meeting was the 14th this month. And their sort of sphere is, we want to connect with the public, we want a better relationship. And what do you do? You exclude people because it's all online. You don't meet them face to face. If you don't meet somebody and feel how they feel about what is or is not happening, then you will never get it right, ever. Now, I still don't know what's going on at those meetings. And yet I was told when I phoned up and I said, well, I would like a report on it, please. And I was told, she's going to be on holiday that week, fine, she can take her holiday and we will be in touch. Nobody has bothered to be in touch. I phoned them again today and I've just had to leave a message in the hopes that somebody will get in touch with me. So I really think you really need to understand the importance of being seen, of being approachable. And when you say to me or anybody else, this is what we are here for, this is what we're going to do, we want you to tell us, you have to ensure that we can do that. And at this moment in time, you do not. I'm sorry to have to tell you that, but that's the truth. Now I'll get on to my original question if I may. Right, yet again, my questions that I asked at the last meeting have not been addressed. They weren't addressed at the meeting, so I followed your protocol or the protocol given to me by the mayor and I went into the offices and I put my question in there again, yes, we get some, nothing. I went in again, nothing. Then I happened to meet councillor Fox and I said, nobody's responded to my questions yet. She said she would look into it. Well, I'm still here, I'm still asking the same boring question in the hopes of getting an answer. So all the people here and the other residents in this town who may or may not listen to this, what face do they have in you if when you ask a very simple, reasonable question in a reasonable manner, not like all the foul abuse people tell me that is going on, I can't get a response? So can you tell me who is going to answer my questions?
What's the question?
My questions were, what was the council doing or what actions were they doing regarding, I'm going to put it, the fracas that went on at the meeting, what action was taken, if at all? And could they explain to me and other residents their reasons for creating a new post, Chief Executive Officer, as opposed to the last post? And the, I wanted a written statement of the balance of the money involved there and what we were or were not getting for this money. When you take into account, there are people in this town who are struggling to feed their families, struggling to keep their families halfway decent, warm and we are spending £55,000 on a chief executive officer when Canterbury City Council, who is enormous compared to Sandwich, are not going to have a chief executive any longer because it isn't cost effective. So that's my question and I still haven't had an answer.
Thank you. Like I say, I've been in post for six months and this is now my fourth engagement in Sandwich. So tonight for the engagement, I've been to council meetings here. I've been to the Thursday surgery on market day and walk around and I was also here for the memorial. So hopefully you'll see me more regularly in your community and we can have these conversations. With regard to what the police do in response to informational concerns, undeniably, Kent Police need to do better at feeding back about what we're doing and why we're doing it or sometimes why we're not going to do it. And I will take that away and my promise to you is that under my tenure as the Community Safety Unit Inspector for Dover, I will strive to make sure that we feed back on what we're doing better. I come from a district whereby we did it very well and it's an area for improvement for us.
Where was that?
I came from Thanet where the community feedback was that engagement, getting our messages across about what we're doing and why was what the community wanted. So hopefully we can replicate that level of service to you. With regards to Detective Chief Superintendent Banks not getting back to you with regards to the information about violence against women and girls, I will take that away and I will personally sort out over the next couple of days, if I can take your contact details, getting you that information which is likely to be the report on the police strategic plan to tackle this over the next 12 months.
Thank you very much. Then we will judge you.
Is that what you're doing?
Thank you. The council undertook a restructure before Christmas. Two members of staff had left, leaving us to do that. The new structure.
Sorry, I can't hear you. I'll come near.
Is that better? Can you hear that?
That's better.
Now that's better.
Sorry, I hold it closer to my mouth. I'll start again. The council undertook a restructure as a result of two members of staff leaving last year. We changed the structure so that there was one person in charge. We named it Chief Executive, perhaps not the best choice of name, but that's the name that was chosen. There was a specific reason for not choosing the name of Town Clerk because if you use that name, there are activities that only that officer can undertake whereas if you don't use that name, other people can undertake them, so it gives you more flexibility. We have replaced the museum manager with a museum coordinator. She has started work recently. We have promoted visitor information lady to a personal assistant and we have one visitor information lady from best reception. We have a responsible finance officer. We have the Town Clerk, Mayor's secretary and head caretaker, now called the facilities manager. We have two caretakers, one cleaner and two public conveniences ladies. And during this restructure, we have saved the council £25,000.
Well, I can't take all that in and remember all that, that's why I would have.
I'd be very happy to share the report for you which explains it all.
Thank you very much, but I would like to point out to you that at least in this last month, I have gone in to answer things and we can't get the information because the Chief Executive Officer is not here. That means there is nobody, this is what I'm told, who's doing the job. So that doesn't seem very efficient or effective, does it?
Mrs Hayter, we can't help staff sicknesses, we just have to go with what we got.
No, I'm not saying that.
Our two ladies that are here tonight are doing a fantastic job.
I'm talking about planning, chairman. If, when you have a position, you must plan your whole scheme. Well, if this happens, it's called forward thinking. If this happens, what are we going to do?
But when you've got a very small, I think, Mrs Hayter, when you've got a very small team, basically, was it three people in the office? When one goes off, they just double up and I think we do, I think we did a one and a half, one and a half.
I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying the ladies, I think it is ladies, who are there are doing their level best, I'm not saying that, you're not understanding.
I am, but the staff do not have the time to answer your queries, is it?
No, I'm saying if you are making new posts like Chief Executive Officer, which cost in, argue a lot of money, you should have the foresight to see that you need backup for that. So if anything happens to that person, you have the staff. So if anything happens to that person, you have the staff who can pick up the pieces and carry on. We don't just do stop because somebody is unwork. Not that I wish anyone being unwork. That's fine. If you were in hospital and some of the doctor was ill, you wouldn't think, right, that's it, mate, that's your lot, would you? You'd expect there to be a full pack fan. And that's what I'm saying. We need a full pack fan. And I would simply write a written report with the costing of the Chief Executive Officer's post.
Okay, I think that answers all your answer to that question. Okay. Can we move on, Sally, please? Because you've been here about 10 minutes speaking. Is there anyone else who'd like to ask a question?
I've got a couple of questions. Can you hear me okay? Could you say who you are? Hello? Oh, sorry, Christina Glynne. And I do filming for the Housebound and I share the views of the council with the public. And I've got some questions here that have actually just been sent in by viewers just now. So let's have a look here. Okay, the first question is, when will the webpage be up to date? And that includes all the missing minutes.
That at the moment, we've had a disaster, haven't we? And that will be done as soon as possible. And actually, I think we've got to train someone up in the office to update the webpage because the Town Clerk used to update the webpage. But as she left in, was it August, September time, unfortunately, we haven't trained anyone up to update the webpage. And also with staff shortages.
Do we have any idea how long it's going to take? Because I know people, you know...
No idea how long it's going to take. Sorry, I don't know how long it's going to take. We're doing the best we can at the moment with what we've got available.
Okay.
But can I give you an answer? We've had a meeting with the IT consultant. He's updating the webpage. But I can't, I don't say, give you a date when it's gonna be updated. It's impossible for me to say it'll be ready when it's ready. I'm sorry.
When you decide something, there should be a time stamp involved. They start on this day, they finish on that time. That's how you're supposed to do business.
I think he's doing free of charge. He's keeping the costs down. Okay.
Well, yeah, I mean, okay. Okay, the next question is, when will the Guildhall future plan be published for residents to see?
Not sure. I have to get back to you. We should have put your question in earlier, lot more after tomorrow. You'd have got the answer, I'm sorry.
No, no, the questions have only really just come in.
Yeah, okay. We're getting an answer back to you, okay.
Yeah, okay. And I've actually, I've got a question of my own here, which follows on from Mrs. Hater's. And it just made me think, in my previous working life, we always had this continuity planning. And I think, I mean, I'm not concerned about specific people per se, but the role of the Town Clerk, which has responsibility for advising councillors and so forth on statutory obligations, that is a missing piece at the moment. And I'm wondering, and I've heard it expressed in the community, is there perhaps not some insurance somewhere? Maybe so that an interim person can be brought in with those skills or something of that sort?
I think the CEO is training, isn't she? To get her qualifications for Town Clerk. That's what I've been aware of.
Yeah, but in the interim, I mean, we don't have...
Yes, but we're only a very small town council. We're all volunteer councillors. We're not professional people. We're doing the best we can with what we've got, with the staff we've got. And I think that's part of the CEO, she will be learning, get her qualification to become a Town Clerk.
Yeah, I'm not criticizing any of that at all. It's really a case of, as part of his business continuity planning, many organisations have insurance that covers a gap in skills, be it sickness or whatever. So people are out. So you may actually even have this insurance, I don't know. But under sort of a business continuity heading somewhere or another, I don't know. I mean, maybe it doesn't exist. Maybe nobody knows about it.
Yeah, we double check that, all right.
Okay, brilliant, thank you. Thank you very much.
Here's councillor John, welcome. Let you settle down. Is there any other questions?
Yeah, I take exception to the comment that was made that the whole council agreed to the restructure. I do take exception. Can hear me okay?
Could you say who you are?
Yes, Mark Moore, Housewives Town Councillor, twelve years in twenty-seven to twenty nineteen. I'm a resident of Sandwich South and have been for the best part of forty years. I do take exception to the comment that was made by councillor Fox regarding the council agreeing to the restructure, but they didn't. We all know that four councillors resigned on block at that meeting. We all know that several other councillors walked out of the meeting. So what councillor Fox has said is a complete and utter falsehood. I have a question for Mr. Bartlett regarding democracy and democratic representation. As a resident of Sandwich South, I cannot vote in an election in Sandwich North. Why is it right that someone who lives in Sandwich North can put themselves forward as a candidate to stand in Sandwich South? It's fundamentally wrong. People that live within the ward should represent the ward. People who want to stand for council should actually live in the ward that they want to represent. The two wards are very, very different, I can assure you. And if you were to take a walk onto the southern side of Sandwich and take a look at the state of the roads, the state of the pavements, the litter, et cetera, et cetera, you would realise there's a disparity between the north and the south. It needs to be addressed. There's a lot of talk about uniting the town, bringing it back together as one town. Yes, I agree with it. But you've got to address the disparity between the two wards before you do so.
I mean, to answer that question, the only thing I can say is, as far as I'm aware, I'm sure this is right, there's no set rule to where you can stand for the election if you want to be.
But there's a set rule in where you can vote.
Yes, there is.
It's double standard, it's double standard.
That's not arbitrary. You know, anybody can stand for any ward they want to. Whether people vote for them or not, it's another...
You have the power to do something. You can do something about it.
I don't think I can. It's not set in Dover District Council. It's the same in Dover, in Dover England. It's the government, whoever's in charge of the government. We'd have to change that, I'm afraid. It's not for us as a Dover District Council to do.
But you can promote it.
Exactly.
When people in Dover can stand for each other, what they want to, that's not for us to stop them doing that. If people choose to vote for them or not, it's entirely up to the residents.
I'm afraid, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good. I'm afraid that a lot of the noise and fury is pointless and is addressed to the wrong people. As councillor Bartlett has said, it's the government that does it, to go on to decide. And it's no good telling us what we, how we must spend money we don't have, how we must do things that we can't do. Take the roads. The roads are the responsibility throughout the town of Kent County Council. Except for the pavements, oh, they're responsible of Dover District Council. And that thing goes on all the way through. It's always somebody else who's responsible for, has collected money from us to do it. So please concentrate on what we can do. Now, in nineteen seventy-two, when we were a borough, we could do everything ourselves and did everything ourselves and it would all work. The local government actually finished that and we are where we are today. Nothing more than a parish council. And with the same powers as a parish council. And I would say to you, the fact that you get sixteen people prepared to spend their a lot of their time working on this and making the best of it and read the papers. They're all there. It gives you the account of where we spent every penny for the last 12 months. The budget for next year will be a good one for us. But it won't be a good one in terms of money because Dover's increasing their preset, as they must do. Kent County Council, well, they have huge problems with immigrants and they're gonna put theirs up. The police, well, we all know the police are gonna go up and everything else. And we shall be blamed for the council, over whom we have no control. So I plead with you, do not waste time. Do not waste your energies on things you can't do, that you can never achieve in doing. It's very, very boring and it's very ineffective. So I, and I do say things like, with great disrespect, we didn't ask for the cover. This cover was offered to us. We said, if you wish to do it, do it, we're not involved. And that, we thought that was best. Well, it turns out it's not quite the best. They'd like something quite different. Well, my inclination is to say wait and see, as far as a lot of these things are concerned. There are going to be big changes in all local government in the next couple of years. And I shouldn't see much of it, I don't suppose. But I should be here until I'm unable to attend any further. And this was, used to be a happy meeting about people talking about Sandwich and Sandwich problems. We've got economics, man management, women management, cover for everything else. And we can't do anything about most of these things. So please concentrate on what we can do. Thank you very much.
You know councillor Farby, it's not all about the money. It's about attitude. And I'm afraid a lot of the attitude is very, very negative.
It's not dialogue.
Can we stop this conversation, please? I'd just like to introduce councillor Sutcliffe, the EDC and KCC representative. So thanks for coming, Sue. All right. So is there any more questions? Of councillor Carter?
Thank you very much. Can you all hear me okay? Thank you, that's great. I've got some questions that I think several people in this room would like to ask. And they're for Dover District Council. And I don't mind who answers them because you have different skills on different issues. And let me read out my questions and then whoever's best to answer them, can you come back? Number one, this will probably be to Sutcliffe. We had an offer of a project called Green Spaces to connect up the green spaces in Sandwich, all the parks and walkways. And this happened, this was offered forward when I was on Dover District Council in two thousand and nineteen. So number one, I'd like an answer on when that is gonna go ahead because that would build on the investment that councillor Trevor Bartlett was talking about. Question number two, and this will probably go to the Economic Services Officer. I'd like to know about legacy of the golf. Because we all had the golf last year and we were told that there was gonna be a legacy coming to Sandwich on economic tourism and visitors. The third one, this is probably very important, is are our waterways gonna be the usual colour they should be? Or are they gonna be green this year again? And what recommendations are Dover District Council undertaking to do with the waterways? You may have noticed they were all green last year. And then the last one is on planning enforcement. Could we have some assurances or guarantees on improved planning enforcement? Because we have had a lot of issues. Recently, we've had porter cabins being put up. But we've had building and planning issues all the time. We'd report them to the planning enforcement, but they're not always followed up. So they're my four questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So if I pick up the first one of those, which was about the Sandwich Park. Actually, I think it was considerably before two thousand and nineteen councillor Carter that this particular idea was mooted. So the origins of this were in the Dover District Council Parks and Open Spaces Strategy, where it was identified that there wasn't a strategic park for the district in the north, in our patch. And so at the time, there was a project which brought together all the green spaces around Sandwich to constitute one strategic park. And there were two benefits to this. One was that actually through council, it was formally identified as the strategic park. And that's important because it means that going forwards, Dover District Council allocate their resources primarily to the strategic sites. So that was done formally and it is now a strategic park. The second reason for doing it was around the heritage lottery funding, which at the time had a fund which was applicable for parks with historic elements as personally has benefited from in a major way. And it was hoped that in due course, Sandwich could do the same. Unfortunately, what then happened was that the Heritage Lottery changed their priorities and that particular fund was no longer available. However, what we have seen and what we will go on seeing is the benefits from it being identified as a strategic park in terms of maintenance and investment around the entire route of the parks, if that makes sense. And that will be ongoing as we go forward. So whilst we haven't been able to take advantage of that heritage lottery funding sadly, which would have been, which we would have used to do some improved walkways, improved signage, that kind of thing, we are still seeing the benefits and we will go on seeing the benefits of that strategic park identification.
Can everyone hear me okay? Yep. For the golf question, so obviously the golf was in that originally because they have an economic impact of around a hundred million pounds for the area. Obviously, the pandemic affected that. The RNA or the Royal and Ancients who run the tournament did commission an economic impact study. We haven't received that yet, but when that is received, it will be circulated. Obviously, in terms of awareness to turn the golf around, it was a shame because it did impact upon some unbelievable events which were being planned by the Sandwich Chamber of Commerce and other groups, which unfortunately fell by the wayside. It was a real shame. But in terms of visitor awareness and the promotion of the area, it had a huge impact. We know that anecdotally, but also speaking to businesses. So people did come into the town, not just in Sandwich, but in Deel, in Dover and beyond. But in the run up to that, before the pandemic, we saw a huge number of a surge of international visitors looking to play our golf courses. So obviously, it's fortunate that we have actually three golf courses side by side, who've all hosted the open previously, which is very unusual. So Princes, for example, offered a three-course deal. They were lots of things doing. And we did receive a lot of international awareness of people who were coming after the open to play. So in terms of an economic impact, it's beyond just a week. It is a huge number of years. Obviously, the pandemic affected, but also in terms of, on simple things. So we ran business groups. So every month we were meeting to how we could work together to make sure there was a good economic and community impact. And they proved really successful. So we were finding about people who were renting out their houses on simple things. So paints, new toasters, new kettles, the money which was coming in. It's amazing the range. And this is why I personally am quite excited to see what the economic impact study will show. But I think the tournament itself, for the turnaround from, basically it was three weeks before, everything was in lockdown, then might not happen. So the turnaround to be able to do all of that and work with our partners and see the legacy of like the Chamber of Commerce starting again in Sandwich, which I think was really important and something I personally enjoyed working with in an MIT bit and something we want to keep going and continuing. It's a very wishy-washy answer, but when that study comes, but the event, the promo which came from that, I shared a lot of our promo business. So as well as I work for White Chris Country, that's the destination management organisation for this district. So we work closely with Dover, Deel, Sandwich, visit Kent, visit England, visit Britain. And the seeing videos of Sandwich being shown by Sky Sports or shown on NBC, you can't buy that promotion. And that's where we see that knock on and we'll see visitors... and we'll see visitors coming again and again, and enjoying the fantastic welcome which, you know, Sandwich and the hoteliers and the businesses provide, as well as other towns and cities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. That was a good promotion of the district, and a particular promotion of Sandwich. I shared very much the points that you've made. I'll try and pick up the other two points, councillor Carter. In terms of maintaining the waterways, yeah, I mean, the District Council's parks team has arrangements in place for maintaining the butts and the rope walk around Sandwich. The conditions certainly isn't always as we wish, and the weather conditions over recent years have impacted on the quality of the environment there. I do genuinely hope that this year we will see them looking in good condition and not deteriorating again as they've done in previous years. But the point is well made, and I'll take that back to the team and share that with them. In terms of planning enforcement, I mean, planning enforcement is one of those things where you're either for it or against it. So, you know, half the people want something enforced, and half the people are delighted with what's happening. And I think that's always a balance to strike. We do have a planning enforcement team. I don't want to get into the, in particular cases. I know there are some cases that have been concerning you and the development along the Old Dover Road in particular, and the way that's been managed. Rest assured, that's been kept a close eye on by the enforcement team. There are other sites in Sandwich where I know there are live cases at the moment. And sometimes the process involved in issuing notices and allowing those notices time to take effect is frustrating for local residents, because we all want to see things happen quickly. But sadly, sometimes there's a legal process we have to follow in order to do for the notices and for the legal process to be effective. But rest assured, we do take planning enforcement seriously. And you're in contact with us reasonably regularly. When issues concern you, I think I'll add that, and thank you for that.
Thank you, Rob. Top's getting a bit on, is it? Anyone else? Okay.
Okay, Dune Summerhayes, New Street Residence, resident. Can you hear me okay? Okay, my first question, I'm not sure whether this will have to be passed on by some of the other councillors. I went into the library in Sandwich the other day, and previously into Deel, hoping to use Witch Online. I'm now told we can only do it in Dover. I don't want to travel all the way to Dover to access Witch Online. We have very little in the way of Citizens Advice Service now, and although Witch Online isn't, it doesn't do all that job, it's a very useful service. So please, can you find out or explain to me why it's been withdrawn? Second question, we pay for all the council staff at Whitfield, we pay for all of you. So why do I still have to make an appointment to walk through the door? Why am I forced to go online if I want to buy parking permits? I don't want to go online. I want to go into the council office and buy them over the counter. How long is this going to go on? Because Rees-Mob can't seem to do anything, but can we do something locally?
In answer to your question about libraries, then yes, I will find out why that is the case and come back to you. But perhaps I can talk to you afterwards and get your contact details, and then I can do it directly.
Obviously, through the lockdown period and the situation afterwards, I, no, let me finish. The lockdown period and the immediate weeks afterwards, staffing arrangements were very different at Whitfield. That's changed significantly now. And the point you're making is, I'm surprised, because my understanding is there aren't appointments anymore. You can make an appointment, which is convenient, but you can equally turn up. And I see people turning up at reception at Whitfield.
I was over there about 10 days ago, you notice on the door, don't come in without an appointment.
Okay, I will take that back and query it, because yes, we are open at Whitfield. Most staff are in most days, I've been in every day this week, and I was in every day last week. And that is, you know, we are very much resuming work as normal. I'll take that back. Because that, you know, those circumstances, as everybody has acknowledged, have changed. And where we were a few months ago isn't where we are now.
Excuse me, sir, but the point you made about we can always make an appointment is totally wrong. Five days ago, I was in conversation with a lady, one of the Dover employees, and it came to the point, and I said to her, because she couldn't actually resolve the problem over the phone. So I said, I'll tell you what, I'll make an appointment for you, to see you at 3 o'clock this afternoon. And she said, oh, I'm sorry, I can't do that because I'm working from home. So there you have it. That was five days ago.
And we spoke to the chief executive officer of Dover District Council, and even he thought it was all ridiculous and out of proportion.
Because it all relies on people having all the smart devices to enable these people to work from home. So pensioners and elderly who haven't got access to smartphones, computers, they're cast out into the wilderness, just to enable people, employees, to work from home.
We pay for.
Sorry, that we are forced to pay for.
Yeah, I also do find it very frustrating that I know we've actually given the staff the right to work from home, because I think we need to fall in line with all other authorities around here, and I know that's not the way. But we are trying to encourage as many as we can to get back in. I was surprised to hear that the offices are closed, or you can only get in by appointment. I'm down there every single day. There's a lot of people going in and out that door all the time. But I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I can reassure you that I look into that and make sure that that changes, because we are open for business. We want people to come down. And if you want me to help you and try and follow up who that officer was, after this meeting, I'm very happy to speak to you and try and get that resolved for you.
I spoke to the chief executive when I told him walk.
Right.
And he said he would look into it.
And he hasn't done that for you, sir? Okay. Well, I'll speak to you after the meeting and happily follow that up for you. Thank you.
Could I just say something there, please? You said that you are trying to encourage your employees to come back to work in the office. They're your employees. They're supposed to do what you say. You're not there to do what they say.
Unfortunately, although I'm leader of Dover District Council, my role is the members. Chief Executive is in charge of the staff.
I think you'll find, I think you'll find, excuse me, Sally, but I think you'll find, if you go into Age Concern, there is a officer from Dover District Council that goes in there once a month. If you've got any concerns with Dover District Council, please find out in Age Concern when that officer's there. And if you've got any problem with filling form, or any other, that is what she is there for. So please, if you've got any problem with Dover District Council, Kent County Council, Social Services, please go into Age Concern, because they're the only two willing to help you. Okay. Is there any questions?
Name's Tom, Bob Tom, and I hesitate to make a contribution. I hesitate because a few years ago, I had a stroke, and it has had an effect on me. I like to think it's not so much the difficulty of my brain, but the difficulty of getting my words together. However, I have been somewhat concerned, concerned that started a couple of days ago from listening to the town council meeting, Sandwich Town Council meeting. And I was actually quite encouraged to listen to the tone and the attitude of Sandwich Town's council at that meeting. Now, I have more than enough views that I can get very angry about what has happened at Sandwich Town Council. But I am also aware that what has happened recently in the last election at Sandwich Town Council is an indicator of a very real change. It's an indication that people don't like the way Sandwich Town Council has been run, and the way it has behaved. Very, very angry. But I perceive changes taking place seems to be a movement away from the party political approach to an independent approach. And I've come to the conclusion, based on last, the last meeting I listened to a couple of days ago, I've come to the conclusion that we actually have got a significant element of a new, of change, of a new attitude and opportunity. And for the first time, there seems to be a move away from the party political approach, and a party political approach that has been dominated for a long, long time by just one party. Okay, I recognise democracy clearly, but nonetheless, that has changed. People in Sandwich said at the last election, when we lost a number of good councillors, some who I would support on the politics, but other that I recognise as being lost by decent, good people, conservative members of council. And it changed, and we've had a change coming in the structure of that council. And I am hopeful that it's going to go forward, and it will continue as it should be. But one of the things we have to do is recognise, and I say this basically to the people who have expressed views by and large from anger. Anger, I know, I understand, because I've shared it in the past. But I do think there is a real element of new change on offer to Sandwich Town Council at the moment. And the meeting I heard a couple of days ago was indicative of that. I would say to colleagues that I've shared your anger about over meetings and years. I would say to you very, very clear, let's give the new change a chance. Let's see what's going to happen, whether or not we will see people not committed by a majority political, national influence situation. Let's try and have a change based on the interest of the collective people. Now, I've said what I would hope accurately wanted to say, but I think let's see what's going to happen. I'm hoping with confidence that it's going to be for the better. Let's see if we can make a better sandwich than what we've had to put up with in the period that I've been in this town.
Excuse me, wait a minute, hang on. I'd just like to say, Bob, you spoke very well, and I wouldn't have known that you'd have difficulty in speaking. I thought it was a marvellous little talk you gave us. And it's nice to see you here. Thank you.
Just carrying on from what this gentleman has just expressed, I found out yesterday that somewhere that I used to live, Chiswell House, which is near Bromley for those who don't know, has been a Conservative-run council for like forever. Now, they had their elections in May, and what really surprised me was they've set up a new group called Chiswell First Matters. And they are standing as independents and are challenging the sitting councillors because the people have had enough.
Okay, I think that's all the questions. You've got a full character.
I've just had two questions for the police.
Excuse me a minute, John. John, I want to wrap this up, so you can, councillor Carter.
Thank you. Last June or July, I asked the council, would they put on the agenda the problems we're having in Sandwich with mobile phone signal? This is particularly a problem for traders, but also for residents. Sorry, you can't hear me? No, it's not the microphone. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Last June or July, I asked the council to put on the agenda the problems that we're having in Sandwich with mobile phone signals. It is pathetic for the 21st century. Traders are having a problem with their payment machines, and residents are having a problem with mobile phones in their homes. They have to go outside to make phone calls very often. They have to go upstairs to get a signal, then they come back down again where they're doing their mobile banking, and the thing is logged out. And so, you know, you have to get the code and all this sort of thing. So I asked, would they put it on the agenda and discuss it? They did discuss it. I was at the meeting, I came, it was a full council meeting. It was pushed on to the IT committee. IT committee, I went to also. It was discussed. And councillor Friend was tasked to, because he understands these things, I think, was tasked with the, to try and find out whether something could be done. Our suggestion was that a booster would be put on top of St Peter's Church. I gather the CCT are quite keen on that, because they would get some money from that. Anyhow, councillor Friend, he tells me personally that he was accused of backhanders or something like that, and he washed his hands of it. Now, the point is that this started back in June or July of last year. It has gone no further. I've heard nothing. I've had no report, and I know that basically no investigation has taken place. There is a company, according to councillor Friend, locally, I believe, that can do this. And I would ask the council, would they pick this issue up again and see if we can get a decent mobile phone service in Sandwich? Now, this has nothing to do with broadband, nothing to do with open reach, it's mobile phone signal. Okay? Can I ask the council, could you pick this up again, please? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, John. I think they have contacted the internet provider, phone providers, and councillor Samson.
Oh yeah, sorry. So yeah, the last step I was aware of from the IT committee was contacting, sorry, can you hear me? Yeah, was contacting the various companies and groups to try and make this happen. I don't exactly know. You mentioned about councillor Friend mentioning a company locally. I can follow up with him about this. Can I speak to you afterwards, John, if that's all right? Cool. I'm sorry, I don't have more to say. Pass the hot potato?
Oh yeah, I've just had two questions for the police. The first, oh, I'm slipping another one in. They're very quick ones. One was the, our lovely PCSO had recently done a police walk with the KCC warden in Sandwich South. I put forward about five questions or queries about issues there. I wondered if I could have a feedback report on these walkabouts in Sandwich South, if possible, and answers to my questions. Thank you. And the second question, which is the most important one of the evening, is, because it's getting to that time of year, what are the police going to do about the motorcycle issue on the bypass this year? Because for the last five years, I've asked the police, Kent Police, to sort it out, and nothing's ever been done about it. And as sure as eggs are eggs, from May onwards, we have screeching motorcycles doing 100 miles an hour. And last year, just to say it's not the safest place to live, a motorcyclist unfortunately had an accident and died. Now, unless you do something about the motorcycles on the bypass this year, we don't want any more deaths. So can you please pledge some support for the motorcycles on the bypass?
So can you please pledge some support for the motorcycles on the bypass? Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Question number one, we will provide some feedback on your questions as a result of the walkabout. Question number two, road safety, something very close to my heart. I live somewhere, I won't go into details, but has a traffic problem. And let me assure you that my teams, working in conjunction with the road safety unit of Kent Police, already have a plan in place for the hotspots throughout the district for the summer to tackle the vehicle problems, hand in hand with the problems on the byways, speeding and also off-road motor vehicle use, which is also a problem for our communities. The plan is in place, it's already been enacted, there's already been days of action. We already had a number of events whereby we disrupted people who were drag racing down the carriageway. And there were a number of successful prosecutions in addition to the fact that we knocked the nail on the head and stopped it early. So it is something we're very much cited on, it's part of our safer summer plan. Details of which, if you want more, you can come and speak to me and I'll be more than happy to discuss the detail in my newsroom.
Thank you. Councillor Fox has asked me to say that all the resolutions that were passed at the council were passed by the majority of councillors. I'm going to call the meeting to a halt now, it is half past eight. I'd like to thank you all for coming. I'd like to thank Ripsids, who's coming for the police and the council and the Kent County Council and so nice you've been, and my fellow councillors coming to support me at this evening. So thank you for coming. If you've got any questions, please approach the people that are here afterwards, okay? Thank you.